Make sure that we call on him. So what I'll do is I will start the council meeting. And then we'll have someone text council member Cunningham to make sure that he joins us in the next few minutes.
Will do.
Ready, Susan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So council will stand in session. Let's go to roll call.
Mick Santa Cruz. Here. Mr. Cunningham. Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Fimbres.
Here.
Mr. Kozachik.
Here.
Mayor Romero.
Here. Item two.
Invocation and appointments to boards committees and commissions.
The invocation will be given by Anna Marrufo, staff member from the city clerk's office.
Thank you, Mayor Romero. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Let us pray. I pray for our mayor and council members today and ask that you grant them wisdom to govern with a sense of welfare and true needs of our people. Give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Deepen their love for the city of Tucson and their desire to serve it. I pray for the agenda said before them today. Please give them assurance of what would benefit those who live and work in our beloved city of Tucson. Amen.
Item two C. And this item, I take a personal privilege because we don't have any appointments today. But these are presentations. A personal privilege to read proclamations on behalf of the city of Tucson in my role as mayor. I want to start with the first proclamation in congratulatory proclamation to our chairman of the Pasco Yaki tribe. Chairman Yokupisio was inducted into the Tejano Roots Hall of Fame Museum. And it was established, the Roots Museum was established in 1999. But it is an amazing honor, not just for Los Hermanos Cuatro, but also for our entire region to have the recognition in such a wonderful cultural art in terms of music. So it's my pleasure to name today January 11th, the Los Hermanos Cuatro Day in the city of Tucson. And so I'd like to read a proclamation. Whereas Tejano music is a fusion of Spanish and Mexican vocal styles and melodies from corridos and mariachi with the rhythms of German and Czech polkas and waltzes, which came from 19th century immigrants from Central Europe to Texas and Northern Mexico. And whereas the Tejano Roots Hall of Fame Museum was established by Tejano Roots Incorporated, a nonprofit organization chartered in Alice, Texas on June 9th, 1999. The acronym ROOTS means remembering our own Tejano stars. And whereas Chairman Yokupisio learned how to play the 12 string bajo sexto instrument at the age of 10. And it was a family gatherings in his grandmother's home where he was introduced to Tejano songs, which then sparked his love and interest for Tejano music. Whereas the Tejano Roots Hall of Fame inducted Peter Yokupisio, chairman of the Pasco Yaki tribe, for his decades of playing the bajo sexto with his family's band, Los Hermanos Cuatro. And now therefore I, Regina Romero, mayor of the city of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim January 8th, 2022, which was the day that he was, he and Hermanos Cuatro was inducted, to be Los Hermanos Cuatro Day in the city of Tucson and encourage all citizens of Tucson to join and listen to Tejano music with observing and celebrating this special day. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and the seal of the city of Tucson, Arizona, to be affixed this 11th day of January, 2022. Much congratulations to you, Chairman Yokupisio.
Very well done, Madam Mayor. Great tribute to our chairman, Mr. Yokupisio.
I do want to give you some space, Chairman, to see if you'd like to say a couple of words.
Sure. I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, and council and everybody else. You know, it has truly been a blessing and an honor via Tucson. You know, I was born in 1957 in the village of Opaspa off a grand road. But my ancestors have been there for hundreds and thousands of years. And my grandmother used to tell me that we can go five generations back of musicians, mariachis, trios, conjuntos, orchestra, everything. But thank God that he blessed me with a little bit of talent. And my brothers struggled with me. And then, you know, throughout the years, I've enjoyed playing in quinceañeras, casino ballrooms, the old Del Rio, every single nightclub you can think of like that that has this kind of music. But I continue doing that with my brother Jesus, my brother-in-law, Albert Garcia, and my now adopted brother, Mark Molina. And for us, I think the original Hermanos Cuatro, you know, were just brothers. Five of us brothers and, you know, Albert, Jesus, Angel, Sam and me. And we did the best we could, not only here, but we also were taken by Jim Griffith. I just wanted to mention him and thank you to him. God bless us all up in heaven. He took us to the Washington DC Oakley Festival where we played there for seven days, representing Southern Arizona and the conjunto and the music scene of Tucson, Arizona. So thank you very much and much, much blessings. And I love you all, you guys. We continue taking care of this great city of ours, this pueblo of ours. And may our Father in heaven always take care of all of us for doing that.
Congratulations, Chairman, for continuing this beautiful tradition and cultural art. I'm, we're very lucky to have you here and all of the history and what you add to the community. We're very honored that you're here with us tonight. And please give our regards to the rest of Los Hermanos Cuatro for their wonderful work. And here's your proclamation. I will give it to you personally, hopefully soon. Muchisimas gracias y que pase muy buenas noches. Thank you so much, Chairman.
Thank you very much. God bless you. Mil gracias.
Gracias a usted. Our next presentation. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
Adios, nos vemos. Our next presentation is a proclamation. Here to receive the Martin Luther King Junior Day proclamation is Reverend Grady Scott. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. I'll read the proclamation and then give you the space to talk a little, Reverend Scott. Really appreciate you being here. This is a proclamation of the city of Tucson, office of the mayor. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. had a dream of equality for all and set out to achieve this objective through non-violent resistance and peaceful demonstrations. And whereas his efforts to achieve the blessings of liberty of social, political, economic arenas for all, regardless of race, religion or creed, were and are supported by all who love freedom. And whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. achieves achievements included formation of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference and Confederation of Clary and Lady dedicated to keeping the fire of freedom burning in the hearts of all Americans. And whereas, as a result of his selfless sacrifice and commitment to non-violence, the Reverend Dr. King was presented the 1964 Nobel Peace Prize in honor of international acclaim. And whereas in assassins' bullets ended the life of Reverend Dr. King in 1968, making him a martyr to the cause of justice. Now therefore I, Regina Romero, mayor of the city of Tucson, Arizona, do hereby proclaim January 17th, 2022 to be Martin Luther King Junior Day in the city of Tucson, Arizona, and encourage all of our residents to reflect on the accomplishments of one who gave his life so that the blessings of equality might be realized for every American. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cast the seal of the city of Tucson, Arizona, to be affixed this 7th day of January, 2022. Thank you so much. And let's all celebrate the legacy of the Reverend Dr. King by doing something in his honor and serving our community. Reverend Scott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. It is honored for me to be able to receive this proclamation. But at this time, I really want to thank the city of Tucson, the mayor and council for your continued support of the Reverend Martin Luther King Junior Weekend. Tucson has historically held a parade, but of course, due to the COVID virus, we were not able to do that this year. We will be having a virtual celebration on Monday. And we do have our Friday and Saturday prayer breakfast. A lot of these things that we're doing virtually, we want to encourage people to continue to watch because Dr. King did a great work for us, for our nation. Our theme for this year is it starts with me. And hopefully each one of us will take up that banner and realize that we can make America a better place. So again, I want to thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank all of the members of the council and the city of Tucson for your continued support of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s legacy. Again, thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, I also want to interject. I want to thank the MLK Breakfast Committee under James Christopher's leadership has led this for the only one in the city of Tucson celebrates the Martin Luther King holiday, celebrates and the money proceeds raised going to scholarships to help a lot of kids out of South Park and Public Gardens. Thank you, Grady, for allowing us to use your facility. It was a virtual. I thank city manager.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Fimbres, for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you.
Reverend Scott, if you want to share with my office any information and links to the celebrations, we would be more than happy to share on our social media pages so that people can tune in and listen to what is being said. I think it's very important that you make, you made this point about tuning in, listening, and doing something. I think we all play a role in making sure that voting rights and equal rights of all kinds continue to be solid and strong in our country. So if you want to share with us any links so that we can share on our social media and of course, you know, continue contributing to these events is equally important. So we'll be waiting for that information so we can share with the public.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Reverend Scott.
Thanks, Grady.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
All righty. Item two D.
Appointments to boards committees and commissions.
The city manager's communication number one dated January 11th is received into and made part of the record. Medical motion.
Yeah, I move that we appoint Keith Domer to the self-insurance board.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Well, I would like to thank Ms. Mr. Keith Domer for your service, your willingness to serve the city of Tucson. We really appreciate your service to our community. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries? Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Hearing none, we move on to item three.
Mayor and council report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number two dated January 11th is received into and made part of the record. Time, this time has been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. These are to be current events of activities within the community and not position statements on policy issues. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? And I think we, we're going to continue with the tradition of starting with Ward one. Because the other time I tried to tip around, I didn't do a great job. So let's start with the vice mayor in Ward one.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. All good on my end. I know, I think we're, our office is going to be taking a little bit of a break with some of our, you know, public meetings and forums because of the outbreak right now. But I did want to acknowledge that this past weekend, on Saturday, January 8th, the Ward Office Planning and Development Services held our fourth public meeting for a proposed change in annexation conditions at 36 and La Choya. We had over 50 neighbors attend the outdoor public meeting and 10 join us online during this hybrid event. And I want to thank everyone who attended, who's participated in this two-year public engagement process. And I really want to thank my Ward one staff, you know, for, you know, putting together, you know, a really, you know, just like a solid outreach program and also just the staff at Planning and Development Services for helping us, you know, re-envision how we engage community, even when we're having really difficult conversations and staying, you know, respectful throughout the process. It can be really hard sometimes because, you know, folks in the public don't always have the shared values of showing dignity and kindness and respect while we engage. But I really do want to thank our city staff for holding it, holding it down for us. So, and thank you to everybody who attended.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Is Councilmember Cunningham here? Yes. Councilmember Cunningham, do you have any current events?
Just a couple of things, Your Honor. First of all, I wanted to let everyone know that obviously we're seeing an uptick in numbers. So try to be as vigilant as possible in remembering that even the smallest symptoms could be putting folks at risk. Also, I encourage people to get boosted if they haven't been boosted, get vaccinated if they haven't been vaccinated. That's really the number one thing on the mind right now. There's so many other things in this world that we could be talking about, but we can't. If we can't get past the pandemic, we're never going to get any semblance of bringing some of those things back to the forefront. So that's really important. I also want to give a shout out to Department, to DTM, Department of Transportation Mobility. Over 18 lane miles of road has been repaved in Ward two on residential streets in the last four months. And that is very exciting.
Absolutely very exciting. Councilmember Dahl in Ward three.
Thank you, Mayor. A few items, including thanking you for being the keynote speaker when we opened the AMFI Newport Affordable Housing Project at the corner of Prince and Stone. A beautiful, well-designed and important effort. Shout out to the Bronx Wash Neighborhood Association, a new neighborhood association in Ward three. This weekend, we planted trees with the help of Tucson Clean and Beautiful Trees for Tucson. And they're already starting a project on a pocket park in their community. A shout out to the Living Streets Alliance, a great nonprofit in town that does all sorts of things, including cyclovia. In Ward three, they're working on a project to connect part of our ward along the 15th Avenue corridor from Tucson House to the south to Nash Elementary on the north. And I mentioned this in our transportation discussion, but I think it's worth mentioning twice. There was a great editorial in the Sunday paper by Ruth Ryman of the Tucson Complete Streets Coordinating Council and Jane Evans, who's president and has been for quite a while of the Keeling Neighborhood Association, has been instrumental in helping get that park for that community, talking about Fourth Avenue and the future of Fourth Avenue, making it safer and more conducive for multimodal transportation and success of the businesses that are along that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lee.
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Fimbres.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank my colleagues and chief, I want to wish my colleagues and city staff, the good citizens of Tucson a Happy New Year. On Saturday, January 15th, the Public Gardens Association will be hosting the 32nd Annual Martin Luther King Breakfast. As with the case of 2021, the Public Gardens neighborhood located in Ward five is the only neighborhood in Tucson that holds that annual event to honor the work and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King, which will be having a virtual event with a video that will be broadcast at 9:00 AM on the city of Tucson's, your two-channel social media sites following. And thank you, Madam Mayor, for wanting to be a part of this. And also councilman Kevin Dahl for also doing a piece of this and city manager. I want to thank the city manager, Michael Ortega, Nate Mandel, Andrew Squire, Andy Squire, and Lady Persutin for the manager's office for their support and work to create the video with messages from community leaders, public gardens, neighborhoods, and city officials. On December 6th, the Tucson Homeless Work Program marked its fifth anniversary with more than 900 people having been served, gone through the program. Pontana Christian Church during their Christmas Eve services made the Tucson Homeless Work Program their effort to help the community and raise, and raise $100,000 for the Tucson Homeless Work Program to continue its work as a five-day-a-week program. I want to thank Pastor Roger Blumenthal, Pastor Glenn Elliott for selecting the Tucson Homeless Work Program for their Christmas event services as well as their wonderful, for their generosity in raising $100,000. Also, I want to thank Shirley Scott, who always reminds me as a Ward Four, the Pontana Christians in Ward Four. So thank you, Nikki, and thank you, Shirley. 2020, the 2022 City of Tucson Ward Five Safety Calendar has gone to print and is now available. More than 300 entries from schools across Tucson area were submitted for consideration for 2022 safety calendar as during the COVID-19 health pandemic. I want to thank City Manager, Mike Ortega, Tucson Police Department, Tucson Fire Department for sponsoring the calendar along with Ward Five and the mayor's office. I also want to thank the students, teachers, and schools for, who work. I want to congratulate Sunset Superintendent Steve Holmes, the recently being named Superintendent of the Year. Congratulations, Steve, for the honor as you work for Sunset's education is the key to success. I want to thank Representative Andrea DeSandro for her work for Ward Five in Tucson as the Arizona Legislature Tucson 2011. Representative DeSandro has worked with us to keep the Cherryvale Police Office and Process Center open serving Tucson and Southern Arizona. His work on veterans issue when it has been, has been at the meeting with us by my office presenting thank you cards and letters to the, those who made up by school and children and their, for their veterans. This is Representative DeSandro's last year in the Arizona State Legislature. I want to commend her for her commitment and expertise will be missed. And tomorrow, the city of Tucson has met on the issues of PFAS people. Tomorrow, our mayor, Gina Romero, will lead the dedication of this. Central Tucson PFAS Project Facility at 4301 East 32nd Street. City of Tucson, Tucson Water work with ADQ on this and work to get this project facility built to deal with PFAS people and will work with the dark AOP plan. A new project will issue, use ion exchange treatment and apply any value new technologies. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for all your advocacy and your work. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Kazachek.
Kevin, you got your hand back up?
Yeah, pardon me, a quick correction. I said Fourth Avenue because I always say Fourth Avenue whenever I talk about an avenue. It's 15th Avenue that Living Streets Alliance is working on in the ward. Sorry, thanks.
Okay. Just a, just a quick reminder to people, the Tucson PMA Collaboration Day homelessness is partnering with the city of Tucson on the point in time count for homelessness. It's January 26th from 6:00 to 11:00 a.m. And you can go on the city website to get, find the link. You have to register in advance. They don't ask people to work alone. You have to be 18 years and older and familiar with either a smartphone or a tablet to take part. And during Omicron, of course, all the COVID protocols will be followed. And that's all.
The West Side in 1998 and have been involved in.
Those of you on the call, those of you on the call, can you please meet ourselves? Thank you so much. I have just a couple of, of events and activities that are happening in the community. First and most importantly, I want, I want to wish the entire Tucson community a Happy New Year 2022. I just wanted to give quick information that the city of Tucson and my office have partnered with Just Arizona, formerly the American Friends Service Committee for the Reimagining Community Safety Survey. Survey responses will help the Community Safety Health and Wellness Program and tackle racial injustice and inequity for communities of color. We will use our findings to drive progress towards a more equitable justice system by organizing affected communities in Tucson to generate their own evidence of what constitutes safety in their neighborhoods. This extensive community outreach and input are vital for the city of Tucson to better serve its residents. The survey is available in English and in Spanish, and it will be open for the next six months. You can find this survey on the front page of the city of Tucson website at Tucsonaz.gov. Make sure to fill it out and share with your networks. Tomorrow, as Councilmember Fimbres just said, I will join the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality and Tucson Water in the inauguration of the Central Tucson PFAS Project, which is a pilot demonstration remedy project to remove PFAS from groundwater north of Davis Mountain Air Force Base. That celebration is tomorrow at 4:30 p.m. at 4301 East 32nd Street. Hopefully you can come and celebrate with us. And once again, I would like to invite the community to visit the newest art exhibit, Los Desconocidos, the Migrant Quilt Project, at the Arizona Historical Society. Los Desconocidos, the migrant quilt project, features a collection of handmade quilts that memorialize migrants who have died seeking refuge in the United States. Each quilt carries the names of those who have been identified or simply states desconocido, or unknown. For those who have not, the quilts are stitched with clothing found on the desert along the migrant trails. They tell the story of the perils of migrants and what they face in the pursuit of safety and a better life. Please visit arizonahistoricalsociety.org for more information. Thank you all so much. We move on to item four.
City Managers Report Summary of Current Events.
City Managers Communication Number Three, dated January 11th, is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on certain, on current events. Ms. Deputy City Manager, do you have anything to report at this time?
Two items, Madam Mayor. Our Business Services Department recently received the GFOA's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. So very proud of our BSD department. And our fire chief, Chief Ryan, has advised us that this weekend, three of the restored fire trucks, two pumpers, and one of the other trucks will be on display at the Hotel Congress. So they will be moved over there for the weekend. So if anybody's out and about on Sunday, those, those units will be on display at Hotel Congress. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you so much, Leanna. Item five.
Liquor License Applications.
City Managers Communication Number Five, dated January, number four, I'm sorry, dated January 11th, is received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, on this evening's liquor license agenda, we have two requests for new licenses and three requests for special events. All applicants are in compliance with city requirements. So an appropriate motion would be to forward items five B, one and two, and C, one through three, to the state liquor board with a recommendation of approval.
Do you have a motion, please?
Salute.
There's a motion?
Second, Your Honor.
There's a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six.
Call to the audience.
At this time, the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations, and call to the audience is scheduled to last for no more than 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meetings Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review the matter, ask the matter be placed on a future agenda, or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call to the audience. And I have a list provided to me by the city clerk's office. So let's start off. We have Joan Warfield. Joan Warfield.
She's on, Your Honor, she's muted. Now she's not.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Joan Warfield. I grew up in Tucson, and I've lived in the neighborhood west of La Choya and south of 36th Street for 28 years. I don't call myself Latina or Hispanic, though I have a fourth great-grandmother whose maiden name was Eolalia Ortiz. I do speak Spanish fluently and have talked with many of my Latino neighbors, whether in Spanish or English, by their preference. Almost all oppose putting a high-density development at the corner of 36th and La Choya, which can only happen if Mayor and Council approve a change of condition to the MH1 zoning restriction promised by the city at annexation. This is the case whether or not they come to every meeting to say so. Many of them did sign a canvassing survey with over 400 signatures or emailed you in 2020 and 2021. A good number also attended the community engagement meeting held in April of 2021, when there was more time to get the word out than for the open house meeting just held on January 8th, organized by PBSD and Ward One to update us on the C98145C proposed project. We received a notice about this meeting a week before Christmas, which is not the easiest of times to get people's attention. One Latino neighbor who has consistently acted has talked with all of his neighbors, many of whom are also relatives. He told me almost all are opposed to a high-density development at 36th and La Choya, but they think that the government is just going to do whatever it wants, regardless of how they feel or what they say. I'm telling you this because in the past Saturday's open house, Vice Mayor Santa Cruz told the 50-plus people assembled on the basketball court at the Archer Center that we were not representative of the 80% Latino population that lives in the area. She made this statement after the Q and A revealed that people remain opposed to the change of annexation, annexation condition on this property, as well as the revised concept plan. As soon as she said this, the very next speaker to get up was the Latino neighbor I spoke of previously. In very strong terms, he addressed the concern that the city will most likely break its promise. We who oppose this project understand that no so-called community, whatever its background, is a monolith, and to characterize one as such would be naive at best. Nevertheless, we object to a counter-narrative that was put forward that the people attending the January 8th open house are not representative of and should not be speaking for the concerns of many to most of the residents of our very unique, diverse, and special neighborhood. Most if not all of us live and chose to live in this semi-rural area precisely because of the way it is and who lives in it. I urge you to vote no to the change of condition on C98145C when it comes before you on February 8th. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Warfield. And to those that are going to speak, I would highly recommend that you turn, if you have the computer on, if you have anything that is projecting the meeting, in order for us not to get any feedback and understand what you're saying, please turn all of your volume on your computer or wherever you're listening to the meeting so that we don't get feedback. Fermin Rivera? Is Fermin Rivera with us?
Hello.
Hi, sir.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead, you have three minutes.
Yes, my name is Fermin Rivera. My home is on 2320 West 36th Street. I have been part of this neighborhood since 1972. My home is right across the street from that 36th and La Choya property. There is a 60, 60-acre lot, there is vacant, currently vacant, and is with an MH1 restriction zoning that was included in the annexation of 19, in 1979 by the city of Tucson as part of the Hiram Banks Annexation that requires a minimum lot size of 36,000 square feet with maximum of two homes or a single duplex. The owner of this property is requesting a change in zoning condi, zoning conditions that can, so he can build 137 new homes in a cluster designed north of this property along 36th Street in between La Choya and San Joaquin Road, right next to Oyama School. And this is in regard of disregard of the 1979 annexation promised by the city of Tucson. Let's see, this so-called affordable houses are going to be built in a 30-foot immobile home square lots with a price no, probably greater than $250,000. There is not going to be affordable to no one in this area. This construction will push the already saturated 36th and La Choya traffic through our neighborhood. It will destroy the Sonoran Desert and, and its habitat. More likely, our property taxes will go up. Vice Mayor Lane Santa Cruz mentioned that the tax revenue of this construction, it will, some of that tax revenue generated is going to be used to, for road improvement. Really? Since when? Tucson City never improves roads when there is a building. During the short-notice community engagement meeting on January 8th, there was a mention of the lack of engagement by the Hispanic-Latino population of the area. I myself, being a Hispanic and very active in my community, was offended by that remark. There are other Hispanic Latinos that are very active in our community. I have spoken to many of my Hispanic neighbors, and the overwhelming majority
20 seconds.
are in opposition of the changing condition that is going to change the peacefulness of this neighborhood. People from this neighborhood, especially people around the 36th and La Choya property, are not in favor of this construction. We are asking our mayor, Regina Romero, Vice Mayor Santa Cruz, Lane, and council members to please vote no on the request of changing condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Kylie, Kylie Willhite, I believe it is.
Ozak?
Kylie Willhite?
She's not on, Your Honor.
Ben Lucero? Ben Lucero? I see a really beautiful child over there with the Vice Mayor. Ben Lucero, is Ben Lucero with us?
He's on, Your Honor, he's muted.
Mr. Lucero, you have to press star six to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Lucero, you have three minutes.
I did it. You fucking cut me off.
Uh, no cursing, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Hello, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm here along with 40 to 50 of my coworkers from Environmental Services, and we just wanted to know what is going on. What is going on with the mandate and directive that you gave? I'm talking. Uh, the mandate you gave Mr. Ortega, you gave Mr. Ortega a directive to make environmental services equal as everybody else in the rest of the city. The rest of the city was given 15, 15 points, 15% raise. We get a 3.6. It's not fair, it's not equal, and we've been waiting and waiting. And Mr. Ortega keeps dangling the carrot out, and he's supposed to be getting back to us at the end of the month of January, and we haven't heard nothing, and there's no updates or anything. Secondly, we're doing unsafe work. Safe, the work that is being done in the alleys is unsafe, they're too close, they're dangerous. There's a lot of obstacles in the alleys that we should really not be in. And our safety is a great, um, it's greatly upon us. And we want to make sure there's no accidents, all the safety, the drivers are safe, all the people are safe. And we just, we just need to know what's going on with that. We want to know how you're going to take care of this. And we know that you have been given, you gave that directive to Mr. Ortega, and it has not been taken care of yet. given, you gave that directive to Mr. Ortega, and it has not been taken care of yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lucero. Danny Dominguez? Danny Dominguez?
He's on, Your Honor.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Out there. Hello. I'm on.
Go ahead.
My name is Daniel Dominguez. I work for Environmental Services along with Mr. Mercedes. I'm just here also concerned with how, I feel like we're not being heard with what our concerns of our, I feel we're getting short-changed here. Uh, we do have a more extensive job. We have to finish our detail every day. We can't just set out a cone and continue the next day where we left off to clock out at four o'clock. We do work overtime a lot, five, six o'clock, and even for the pandemic, we were having to come in. We can't do our job from home, so Mr. Ortega labeled us, labeled us first responders, but when it came to the compensation, once again, nothing there. Uh, we're operators, not just drivers. We operate these machines. We have obstacles daily in the alleys, on the curb. We have children, we have to watch out for, we have cars, mailboxes, et cetera, and we're not feeling that we're justly being compensated. We work many hours, ten, eleven, twelve hours a day, and how you get that we are ranked above the, the, our pay rate is beyond me. They did a market analysis, and once again, they did another one, but using the same company. I just have no idea how you use the same company, you know? Like Mr. James King said last week, you don't go to the same doctor to get a second opinion. And also, I would like, if we need, I mean, I don't even think we need a market analysis. We can just sit down and talk about our, our daily work. Uh, most of us are an average of thirty to forty percent underpaid, is what we found out.
Thirty seconds.
And all we're asking is for the remaining eleven-point-four, so we can be at the fifteen like many around us got. Even our own mechanics, who are classified correctly as heavy equipment mechanics, and make three dollars an hour more just with that, but we are not heavy equipment operators. That's another argument. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dominguez, for coming for us. Um, Abreza Zegir?
Good evening.
Go ahead, Ms. Zegir. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Mayor and council, my name is Abreza Zegir. I moved to the West Side in nineteen ninety-eight. I have been involved with environmental protection and conservation my whole life. I have been an officer of the West Side Development Neighborhood Association since inception in two thousand and five, Thirty-Sixth and LaToya. Due to the overwhelming opposition to the removal of our promised annexation condition, Ward One and PDSD scheduled a community engagement meeting April of twenty-twenty-one, and then an open house this, this past Saturday on the eighth. Thank you. Between these, these meetings, there was no communication or outreach with the neighborhoods that I know of, although Vice Mayor Santa Cruz stated at the open house meeting on the eighth that they had canvassed people in the summer of two thousand and twenty-one. No one that I know of participated in this canvassing, and we've heard nothing about it until on January eighth. Evidently, we are not considered stakeholders. We are only neighbors, mere citizens. You seem to only want our input? No, not the specifically designed, worded survey to support whatever it is you want to force-feed us, but our true inputs. Our inputs only seem to get acknowledged during election cycles or when there is something you want from us. Um, I'm going to do a little ad lib here. You really need to give our local folks that I just heard from, give them their right raise. Okay. Okay. Seven-tier years of neighborhood involvement and leadership of this neighborhood that represents a very diverse population ethnically and financially has enriched my soul. Our diversity is our strength. We will not be separated or categorized or pigeonholed for political gain. The expertise, knowledge, and familiarity with our neighborhood and the sixty acres at Thirty-Sixth and LaToya seem to mean nothing, nor do the views of the other folks that have lived here for generations. Our neighborhood is dedicated to protecting our Sonoran Desert and for fostering good stewardship. The sixty acres has been cleaned up many times by neighborhood volunteers over the last fifteen years. We are not going anywhere. Why are we paying into a system without being listened to? I quote you, Mayor Romero. This is Abreza Zegir, what chaired West Side Development Neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Zegir. Dale Warner?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, sir. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and Council, thank you. I'm back. My name is Dale Warner, moved to Tucson in nineteen sixty-four, and in nineteen eighty, moved to just west of Thirty-Sixth Street and LaToya Boulevard. Vote no on C nine eighty-one forty-five C, Thirty-Sixth and LaToya. Our public relations meeting on January eighth, this last Saturday, Lane Santa Cruz and Scott Clark told us in neighborhoods, the public hearing will be on February eighth, over and over. Saturday's meeting was very frustrating for all, nor a good outcome for most of both parties. Vice Mayor Lane Santa Cruz made a bad statement to the group. We are not the ethnic mix she is looking for. Wow. This hundred and ninety, thirty-seven lot site plan is the densest plan to date, and Lane Santa Cruz stated that she wanted and approved the twenty percent increase of density from a hundred and thirteen to a hundred and thirty-seven lots on the north side. For over forty-two years, PDSD and M and C has supported our neighborhoods protecting this sixty acres. Lane Santa Cruz, a yes vote at the price of our neighborhoods, has put this in writing to us many times. This site has come to Mayor and Council too many times, and it is their time. No one should be discriminated based upon race, sex, or presence of disability. Using FLD and RAC to get as many lots as they can, making these lots so small, they cannot, they have no option but to put two-story housing for this site that are not ADA compliant units. Most FLD projects in the last five years are non-ADA compliant two-story units. FLD and the use of RAC as a development tool has to be removed before the density is acceptable, ensuring one-story houses across lot plans for equity and protection for those with disabilities. PDSD and now Lane Santa Cruz is using discriminatory practices that are not helping our communities most vulnerable. I give, I have given two site plans, E eighty-eight and E ninety-six, to the owner, to PDSD, to Lane Santa Cruz personally, to show what could be. I will be forwarding each, I will be forwarding these plans to each of you. Mayor and council's speech, my next one. Seven-point-six-six RAC density bonuses given to this FLD project development for doing it this way, making the net gain RAC of nine-point-nine-three, density of lots per acre. Honorable Mayor and Council, we are not, we are your neighbors. You own your individual vote.
Time.
Vote no on C nine eighty-one forty-five Thirty-Sixth and LaToya. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Brett Murphy. Brett Murphy.
I don't show him on, Your Honor.
How about Kirk Olaflin?
Yes.
Kirk Olaflin. Mr. Olaflin, if you are on mute, you have to press star six for us to be able to hear you.
He just muted himself, Your Honor.
Mr. Olaflin, you have to press star six.
And then possibly unmute his phone.
And possibly unmute your phone, so physically unmute it and then press star six.
Try star six again. Now try unmuting your phone. He's muted again, Your Honor.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna have to move on to the next person. Martha Lynn. Martha Lynn? She with us?
Yes.
Can you hear me, council members?
Yes, we can, Ms. Lynn. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. My name is Martha Lynn. I live in West Side neighborhood, and as you heard at the meeting, oh, I did send a larger, a couple of page document to you council members, which include this speech for your review. As three minutes isn't long enough. At the meeting that Vice Mayor Santa Cruz called last Saturday, you heard that she informed those of us who came that we don't represent this West Side neighborhood because we aren't the ethnic demographic, and you have heard how people have felt about that. I am one with probably the least longevity of folks working on this project. I've been here nine years. My husband and I are the only white people on our street. We know our neighbors and we're tight with them. Our neighborhood is old school. We take care of each other. I have canvassed much of this neighborhood over the last proposal, and my, what Lane Santa Cruz's own survey corroborates what I found, but Saturday, those results were misrepresented. When we asked, no one on her side of the table would mention what the residents actually wanted for the sixty acres, even after the people at the table had referenced the survey twice. They are, one, natural open desert space, eighty-four percent. Two, water harvesting green infrastructure, fifty-nine percent. Three, transit connections, walking, biking improvements, forty-seven percent. You note, they don't add up to a hundred percent. People were instructed to pick their top three. Twenty-three percent of residents chose affordable, middle-class housing in their top three choices. It comes in second to last in the survey, only above others. So, if she is telling you, council members, there is support for this dense housing cluster, please listen to me now, and remember, this is not consistent with her own survey. Also, the current proposal is twenty percent denser than the last proposal you denied, and I heard her acknowledge this at Saturday's meeting. My West Side neighborhood should be recognized as a historic neighborhood. It's still peopled with the same families who've passed this property down for generations. It is a lower-to-middle-class neighborhood overall with a good percentage of Hispanic native population. These three-hundred-thousand-dollar two-story homes and not affordable housing don't fit into our rural thing, and is truly and simply gentrification of historic neighborhoods. My city representative, whom I voted for, appears to see me and my neighbors as her opposition instead of her constituents. She makes a point to honor the ancestors of the land before each meeting, and then shows us the intent is to do what gentrification always does, roll over us and the ancestors with bulldozers. I'm asking you all to vote against this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. I'm gonna go one more time back to Mr. Murphy, Mr. Brett Murphy. Miss Message, is Mr. Murphy still on the line?
No, Your Honor, I don't show him. We were also trying to call Kirk Olaflin.
Okay. Yes, Kirk Olaflin, is he, is he with us?
No, I don't show him on any longer.
Okay. And then?
Your Honor, he did just come on again.
Okay. Mr. Olaflin, are you there?
He's muted.
Let's try Kylie. I think it's Kylie.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, Mr. Olaflin.
Oh, thank God. I had, I called back. Honorable Mayor Romero and council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today on the proposed Thirty-Sixth LaToya Development Project, C nine eighty-one forty-five C. My name is Kirk Olaflin, and I've called in Channant Hills Home since nineteen seventy-eight. A recent open community meeting held at Archer Center, I was not afforded this right to speak publicly. After paying proper taxes on my home in the Channant Hills for over forty-four years, I feel I have some insight as to the distrust we have for city planners and engineers in their assessment of flood control and other important issues at stake. How can we trust city engineers on their assumption that no rain runoff will impact Enchanted Hills' wash? My property is now in a designated FEMA flood zone after thirty years of ownership. Really? A recent University of Arizona hydrologic study for Tumamoc Hill states that any development with increased, will increase storm runoff volumes, flood peaks, and frequencies routed through these areas and threatens existing downstream urban communities. We are that downstream community, and I don't trust the city to protect my assets. I've already lost value due to the FEMA flood policy changes made in the last decade. How can I trust city planners and engineers when a street drainage easement on the east side of my property has not properly functioned for the past forty-four years, and the city refuses to make it right? Another issue ignored by city planners and engineers is the fact that the southern portion of the Enchanted Hills neighborhood is basically a den-end. Our only entry or exit is by south LaToya. We don't have the option of using any other street, totally ignored by city planners and engineers, and totally frustrating for our ignored set of residents. From my experience, city engineering and planning is out of touch with reality. This development will cause harm, real harm, and to existing and downstream residents, and history shows what happens when promises aren't kept. Please vote no on Thirty-Sixth and LaToya, C nine eighty-one forty-five C. Thank you for your time.
All right. Those are all the speakers that I have on the queue, so no one else is available. Miss Message, do we have anyone else waiting?
Nobody else on the list, Your Honor.
All righty. And I do see the Vice Mayor, hands up. Vice Mayor?
Hi, Mayor. Thank you. City Attorney Mike Rankin said that I could respond to some of the criticism in the calls, and so I just wanted to clarify to my colleagues that this was, you know, a fourth public hearing. The initial two were, you know, at the beginning of the pandemic, and with the technology was really challenging, you know, to be able to, you know, do a fair public process. There was a lot of misinformation being shared, and so we decided to do, without any development proposal, a different community engagement process last year. a different community engagement process last year, which was the surveys that folks were talking about. And so we shared that information with the owner about what were some of the priorities for that area. And so they came back with the design and that through our own, you know, process, we're legally required to take, you know, to like, you know, have a, have a public meeting about it. And I, it's been, you know, a really charged and contentious proposed project since the beginning. And it's just been really unfortunate that we've been met with a lot of disrespect and bullying tactics and like misinformation campaigns and not allowing us to meet our neighbors, you know, where they're at. I know that there's a long history of distress, you know, in, in city government. And I continue to show up in, you know, in a way that's, that's humble and in the best way that I know because I'm not responsible, you know, for the decisions that were made decades before me. But it is really unfortunate that like me and my staff continue to be disrespected and to, you know, to my comment about that, you know, the folks, you know, that were in attendance there that actually, you know, the, yeah, the, the majority of the Latino families that live there were not represented, you know, at that public forum. And that's what I was trying to speak to because we've made sure that we make all of our information bilingual and having interpreters at all these meetings. And we, my staff was being met with such resistance for even having that information in Spanish during this public meeting. So we've been, you know, having to confront a lot of racist, you know, attacks from folks attending the meetings. And so I just find it unfortunate that, you know, my stating the fact about who, you know, was being represented at that meeting is, is being taken as like, you know, like, like, like I'm, like I'm the one, you know, trying to ram something down their throats when I'm just, you know, trying to create a process where anybody can participate. And frankly, just really being surprised that there are some folks who feel like I should be making backroom negotiations instead of having, you know, transparent public processes for hearing everybody out. So I just wanted to make a comment, you know, we've been, we've been hearing call to the audience the past, you know, year and a half on this development proposal. I haven't said anything, but I, I was, I was so disappointed, you know, at the last meeting of how, like, the disregard for like human decency and interacting with each other. And so I, you know, yeah, I respond with feeling really guarded as a result. But, you know, either, you know, you know, the need for housing, the need for, you know, preserving our environment, you know, and the need for treating each other with some freaking, you know, human, human decency through these challenging topics. So that's all I wanted to say, and, and thank you for the time.
Thank you for your clarification, Vice Mayor. We move on to item seven.
Consent agenda items A through C.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received into and made part of the record. Ms. Clerk, you requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, on this evening's consent agenda, item A is an IGA with the Tucson Unified School District and Pasquay Yaki Tribe for improvements and maintenance to Ritchie Elementary School. Item B is an IGA between the city and the county for the operation of the El Presidio Plaza and Parking Garage, which has been continued at the request of staff. Item C is planning and development, suspension of effective date for development review fee restructure to support new permitting system. So an appropriate motion would be to approve consent agenda items A and C.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
There's the motion in a second. Any further discussion? Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Lee.
Aye.
Ms. Santa Cruz.
Aye.
Mayor Romero.
Aye.
Mr. Kaczak. Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Mr. Feimbrass.
Aye.
The items on the consent agenda are approved by a vote of seven zero. Item eight.
Public hearing, Air Park Ten Annexation District in Ward Five, hearing.
The city manager's communication number eight dated January eleventh is received into and made part of the record. We are, this time is the place legally advertised for a public hearing on the proposed Air Park Ten Annexation District. The annexation district is located on the southeast corner of Alvernan Way and Los Reales Road encompassing approximately seventy-nine point nine-nine acres. And it's within the obligated water service area for Tucson Water. Staff would like to make a brief presentation before we begin the public hearing.
Good evening, Your Honor. Thank you. It's just that we have a few representatives here from Lincoln Development and Carrie Sylvan here. If you have any questions for this annexation. But basically, I just want to thank you. This is the first step on the annexation, proposed annexation. If we give direction on this tonight, we would begin the original city zoning process as discussed in the annexation agreement you authorized in October. So again, this is just the first step in this annexation process. And happy to hear any comments from Mayor Council. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to provide some time and space for Councilmember Feimbrass if he would choose to take it. If he'd like to add anything to, to this item before I close the public hearing.
No, Madam Mayor, I think it's a good thing for the south side. Been working on this with the company and doing positive things. And I want to thank Mike Chukowski, Barbara Coffey, and this too, and the Carrie Sylvan's group that's been working with us. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Of course, thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers scheduled to speak? Do you have any, anyone listed?
Your Honor, we didn't have anyone listed. We believe Kylie Willhite may have wanted to speak on this issue. However, we do not show her online at this time.
All right. Okay. So we don't have any other speakers?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So if not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This public hearing is closed. What is the council's pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I move to proceed with the Air Park Ten Annexation District.
Second, Your Honor.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, go ahead, council member.
Great job, Ward Five, Councilmember Feimbrass. This is a really good win for the city. This is a great use of how we're gonna live out the vision of what the sustainable campus is gonna be. It's a total step in the right direction. Wanted to give a big shout out to Richard Feimbrass and his leadership on this. Well done, man.
Thank you.
Yes, very well. Very well done for the staff and Councilmember Feimbrass's office. Again, I wanna add to the comments by Councilmember Cunningham that this is, this annexation will provide much-needed manufacturing, distribution, and warehousing space in our community. Its location is very close to the airport in the Los Reales Sustainability Campus, which makes a lot of sense. And it will help meet up pent-up demand for this type of industrial space within city limits. So congratulations to all those that put this annexation together. And thank you all for your hard work. I'm looking forward to the next step in the process. With that, there was a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item nine.
Zoning, C nine twenty-one dash fourteen, the place at Mason Ranch Phase Two, SR two R three, city manager's report.
City manager's communication number nine dated January eleventh is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to rezone approximately three point six acres from SR, which is suburban ranch, to R three, urban residence zone. The project is located north of Tanque Verde Road and west of Bear Canyon Road. The preliminary development plan proposes fifty-six new apartment units in two-story buildings as phase two of the place at Mason Ranch, a multifamily apartment community. Staff recommends authorization of R three zoning subject to conditions. The zoning examiner recommends authorization of R three zoning subject to conditions. Is there an applicant, is there a applicant or representative of the applicant present?
I'm not sure anybody's online, Your Honor.
Brian Underwood's online.
Your Honor, I see Brian Underwood. He may need to unmute.
Brian and Bill, okay. Here we go.
Yeah, we need it. We need a, this is a requirement just to accept the, the conditions. So I don't know, Mr. Underwood, maybe just left the room.
He's muted.
He is muted, and I don't know if he has the.
He can't unmute.
Sorry about that. Hi, Your Honor. Yes, Brian Underwood here. For some reason, you couldn't unmute and our camera won't.
That's okay. That's okay. As long as I hear you, you know, we receive an acknowledgement. So are you agreeable to the proposed requirements, Mr. Underwood?
Yes, Your Honor.
Excellent. That's all we needed to hear.
Thank you.
Thank you. What is the council's pleasure?
Your Honor, a couple of things, just so people know. The, the top two hundred and fifty-six units in that top acres, that was actually part of an annexation in nineteen eighty-three. So the first part of this project is by right. It was, it was zoned R three for almost fifty years before anybody saw it. This adds two hundred and fifty-six units right away, and then some additional units after. We're in the middle of, as you know, a housing crisis, so this is an opportunity to address it. Moreover, this provides over one point seven million dollars in impact fees to the city of Tucson, as well as four hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars in impact fees for parks, one of my favorite subjects. This one part of the rezoning is filling a gap in space between office and what was R three by right. It actually makes sense as a cohesive development, and it helps the area develop properly. That's why I'm recommending that we approve it, and I'd like to move the item.
So.
There's a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Carries. Item ten.
Zoning, C nine twenty-one dash fifteen, Aho and I ten, Aho Way, R one and R two, to C two, city manager's report.
City manager's communication number ten dated January eleventh is received into and made part of the record. This is a request to rezone approximately two point zero nine acres of vacant land from R one and R two to C two. The project is located at nineteen eighty and nineteen ninety East Aho Way, near the southwest corner of Aho Way and Interstate ten. Staff recommends authorization of C two zoning subject to conditions. The zoning examiner recommends authorization from R one and R two to C two zoning subject to conditions. Is the applicant or representative present?
Yes, Mayor Romero, this is Adam Call with the Planning Center.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Adam. Are you agreeable to the proposed requirements?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Excellent. What is the council's pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I move that we authorize the request for rezoning as recommended by the zoning examiner or by the city manager and by the city manager's office. And as by the applicant.
Second.
There is the motion. I think I heard a second, motion a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. And this is just for future reference. I'm in support of this rezoning. However, I think this could have been a situation where we could have tried out our flex zoning, our new flex zoning, our new mixed-use kind of, we could have taken that one for a ride. But it's all right. We'll get the next one. Either way, it's gonna be a good development.
Yes, much-needed good development and commercial development in the area. So thank you. Hi, Lynn, I see you. Did you want to add anything? Okay. Excellent.
No, ma'am. It's just on backup in case our other computer didn't work.
Thank you so much. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eleven.
Adjournment.
Council will stand adjourned. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, at or after five-thirty. Thank you all so much. Have a wonderful evening, and thank you for your hard work. Great job. Great job.
All right, everyone.